All right, again, I apologize for the late start. Okay, this meeting is called the provisions of the open public needs law. Meeting on March twenty seven, twenty twenty three was known as the Internet Democrat career news on March twenty four, twenty twenty three posted on board at Borough Hall. Other data has remained continuously posted as required in addition to copy it's notes is available. Bill Bullock is on file with office, I can, Michael do the roll call, please.
Mr. Gar.
Here.
Mr. Johnston. Mr. Long.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ms. Rosetti.
Excuse me.
Ms. Tilling.
Here.
Ms. Carol.
Here.
Okay, the work session and to discuss continuing to discuss the budget by law has to be introduced at our next meeting. Ms. Rosetti, neck, waiting myself and our CFO, Joe Hans on Friday. To go over pretty much the same stuff that he is going to go over with. Everybody else tonight. Which is the sheet entitled Plan B, small tax increase this year, this was any requested. For Mr. Hans to look at doing smaller increases. And whether or not that would prove out to cost the taxpayers left over time, what that would do to the budget. So he ran those numbers for her. And. And then you have. Sheets with the highlight, so Bill, I'm gonna just turn this over to you and let you walk everybody through it. And what the exercise show.
Okay, so what I did was. Basically made it so that. The tax rate increase was approximately two percent a year. And I did that only by reducing the amount of. Extra debt principal paying every year. Yeah, I didn't mess with any other. Budget lines or revenue lines, just that specific line and. Basically, what it comes out to. If we didn't fund it this way, we're gonna have to borrow it with short term notes and. You know, if we take a note out this year, the first payment wouldn't happen until next year, so you're not gonna see. An impact of that. Until next year, as far as interest on the notes increasing. And. So that's why I, that's how I did it for next year, it's still a two percent increase next year because I. I'm anticipating paying off some additional, but not as much as we were. So over the four years that we would have to be borrowing this money, twenty four through twenty seven. It comes out to approximately three hundred thousand dollars of interest that we'd be paying. On the notes. Instead of using that money to pay off debt principal, it would be going to no interest.
What did that do for our, our ABS at two point eight percent, doesn't it down at all?
So, so what I did was if you look at that. The last page. Each four of that packet. It shows the total.
Which one?
Yes. Last page, total debt, so in the end, you're gonna get to the same place because I, I structured it so we're. Over the five years paying off the same amount of principal, it's just that. It's more towards the end in Plan B as opposed to Plan A, we're paying it more upfront and gradually. Because after three years of taking out a note, you have, you're required by law to start making principal payments. For the first two years, you can do an interest only if you wanted to. Not recommended, but. So anyway, so. Both of these methods get you to the same point, we would be at about one point four or five percent debt ratio. Just a little bit over eight point seven million dollars of debt by the end of twenty twenty seven. That's with paying off our extra stuff and paying off the regular debt payments that we're paying.
So, but what are you cutting then, we're spending three hundred thousand dollars on interest?
What I'm doing is I'm taking it. And structuring it so that the inch, the principal is paying off more at the end of the. Not now, but more towards the end of the. The five years, so.
So.
If.
But, so in your summary page, you said the tax rate would be two point five percent higher though. So we're paying more though, to get to the same place?
You're paying more because. You're, you're paying off, you're paying three hundred thousand dollars over those years of interest that you wouldn't.
Six cents.
Six cents, correct, and. How I showed it was after in twenty twenty seven, Plan B. Your tax rate will be dollar seven, one point oh seven five instead of one point oh five in Plan A. So you're starting off. A higher number.
So if we look at the second page in this, or third page in this. The third page in this, right? So the five year plan, the bottom, the tax increase. Is a four point three five percent increase this year.
No, that's over the five years.
Over the five years, it's a four point five.
It's, yes, it is four point three five percent increase this year and that's zero for the first four.
First six five three cumulative.
Yes.
Over five years, we end up with a higher percentage. Increase in taxes and we end up with houses paying more in taxes. And that's doing what Liz asked was even taking in that tax assessment, da, 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 da. We're gonna end up, people are gonna end up paying ninety bucks more.
More, right.
By the soft and gentle. I mean, to be blunt, we're wasting three hundred thousand dollars in interest only instead of putting that to work. To into capital into the capital fund or whatever. And it's gonna cost more, correct?
So, just a question, so over. It would be two percent increase year over year for five years, is that correct?
So, yeah, so the way it is is.
So this year is two percent, next year is.
That's Liz's proposal.
That's, okay.
So can I, as we.
Means you're gonna go back to the taxpayer every year and tell them they're gonna have to pay two percent more. Right?
Nice, so the last, so we're propose, the proposal that you and I structured is. A four, basically a four point three five cent increase this year and then nothing. And then in four years or five years, the union hotel pilot's gonna kick in and it's possibly gonna be a decade before we have to increase taxes again. So that's the four year going forward, what is the four year going backwards look like? What were the tax increases in nineteen, twenty, twenty one, I know there was none last year, because there was an election year.
Right, so. Yet. In twenty one, it was two and a half cents. Twenty, it was one point seven cents. Nineteen, it was three point five cents.
Three point what?
Five.
Okay. So wait, so three, five, one, seven is five, two, and what was the last one?
Two, two, five. So in total, over the past five years, it was seven point seven cent increase. From eighteen through twenty two. It was a seven point seven cent increase.
So if we go with Plan B, it's a seven cent increase again, over four years.
It's.
Versus six and a half versus a four point three five percent increase. Once.
But with this Plan B, does that give us the room to be able to bond for anything? Or no?
At a slower rate, now, because you're paying off the principal slower.
Right.
So at the end, yeah, you.
That we have no legal room there. With this.
Yeah, so my credit card, right, so my credit card, my credit card is at the max, or us, almost at the max. Break this down, it's almost at the max, because I'm only paying interest and no principal. Then my binding power is. Less for Nolan Boyd versus that if I just paid down the principal and so I have this much money. That I can play with versus no money, is that?
Correct, yes, yes, so, so we have. A police building that needs to be finished, that's gonna cost. I don't know, we're gonna have to be able to come up. To prepay five hundred to the salary for two fifty for the locker rooms, how much? One point six we need, total?
That, that's, yeah, that's rounded up.
Can we bond right now for one point six million?
Oh, no, we, well, it'll be close, I don't remember what the.
That will take us out to the whole.
We'll take it, yeah, but we, we need the money in the capital improvement funds to, to house it down.
Okay, so we can, so, and then we have a well we wanna put in there. It's gonna cost over a million and a half, we have the money for that?
No.
Okay, we have, we're under.
We're in preparation. The which we have.
You got a prepay for it, Michael, you gotta deal with the bond for it, it doesn't matter where the money's coming from.
That's.
The law. That's the law, so let me go on, we've got. We're under, we have an administrative consent order from the EPA to do the wet, well, weather facility, which we're hoping to do in two years maybe. I mean, Terry's trying, our engineers are trying to get us some wiggle room for two to three years, we do that?
How much are we talking about there?
Three million.
Not at this point, yeah.
Main Street program, three million from Circle down to William Street. How about a new well for Liberty Village, one and a half million? New well for, and moving the water lines around and the over down for David Johnson or the Agway? So this is effectively, this is effectively the way to kill all activity in one of them. If you just, so Marsha, who really is not a big housing fan, as everybody knows, I should just keep my mouth shut and let the council not do this. Right, we should go with Plan B and then we can't do anything, we'll be dead in the water of this town. Can't do any more road projects, we can't accomplish the ACL, we can't. Can't do anything. Unless you tell me, I'm wrong.
No, we don't have the, the money in the capital improvement fund to be able to put down payment and you're, you're. Limited with what you can actually borrow currently, because. You know, at. Eleven point, almost twelve million dollars of debt currently.
Right, but this proposal, so what did you say that the, the, the tax increase was the big one, three and a half percent in? Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
Three and a half percent?
Three point, no, three point five cents.
Three point five cents, it's great, so. But a collective seven plus something.
Seven point seven cents, yeah.
Over, over the last couple of years, nothing last year, so is it, right?
Yeah, it actually went down quarter.
Okay, so then this is four, this is like four and a half cents once, okay. Susan, do you have any questions for Bill? You're on mute, Susan, if you, if you're. There we go.
Not at this, not at this time, I'm gonna. Speak to Bill later this week.
Okay, I'm just gonna remind everybody, the one place mayors cannot vote is on budgets, so. There has to be four votes to introduce and four votes as budget. And if you guys can't come up with four votes, then either you need to come up with a new revenue source. Or you have to make a decision what you want this budget to look like and live with the results that we're dead in the water of this town. So. Any questions?
No, I, I have a statement though, I mean. I've served under two previous mayors and council was never involved in the debt management part of. Wilmington Borough, and that to the detriment of council, honestly. So I just wanna thank Marsha for including us in this management plan, I'm so sorry, it's such a sad, a sad one too, it will get better. I mean, it is what it, it is what it is, it's an eye opening experience. You know, we were never, you know. No clue that, you know, our bonding capacity was only ever so much and that how that affect the, how the. Tax rate increase affects. Even your bonding capacity and what project you're doing, you can.
And, and what, and what the public, I don't know if there's nobody watching, there's a few people here. Anything government does that's capital. Even if we're getting a hundred percent grants, even if we're getting an earmark from the state legislature. We have to have the bonding capacity. Do that project, we have to have five percent down. So if it's a million bucks, we got a fifty thousand sitting there, we have to have five percent down by law, we have to have the debt capacity, which cannot exceed three point five percent of our last three average. Set values on our properties in this town. We cannot exceed that, it is not good to get too close to that number, which is where we are now. We have to pay for everything and then we have to produce receipts to get money. Even if somebody plunks money in an account as a gift. Um, we have to be able to pay for it, so. And that is, you know, and I know that, you know, I've made a career of trying to make. The public understand how all this works and. Very transparent about it, very different than. How the federal government operates, it's very different than how private sector operates, it is public money, the more you all know. The safer the public is, the more educated you are to make better, better decisions and. You know, I've. You know, it, it all. You know, people can say that they want whatever they want, but it all comes down to taxes and I know people don't like to pay taxes and it all comes down to taxes. But. If I. Didn't feel like. Bill had really scrubbed this and I know how hard he's worked on this and putting this together. To put us in a better fiscal position to loosen up things and to get things paid down and. I just hate wasting money and the idea of wasting six cents of my tax dollars, three hundred thousand dollars to pay down interest is just. I don't carry a debt on my credit card, so from the idea of just wasting that money is. Bother me tremendously.
Well, it's not fiscally responsible either, to me, it's not fiscally responsible, I mean, I'd rather put that three hundred thousand dollars into paying more. Debt or being able to put that money into, you know, the capital.
Yeah.
Lines, so this way we have more bonding capacity, we can continue doing the projects that we wanna do in this town.
Right.
Not be stymied because. Shit, it's got no more bonding capacity.
Well, I also think that you have to look at, you know. People focus on here and now, you can't just focus on today, you have to focus on what happens. Five years from now, I tell my staff this all the time when we have to put together five year plans for, for a company, so the point of it is that you have this much to work with. Because you wanna get to this much, and I think that's the point, is how much, you know, if, yeah, is it, is, does it hurt? Right, right out of the gate? Absolutely, but what happens five years from now, when it doesn't hurt? What happens five years now when infrastructure is coming in, what happens five years from now? I just think you have to kind of look at it this way, and I'm, I believe, I'm not trying to convince anything, I'm just trying to. Like, look at this. Not. Tunnel vision, but. Look at it in terms of what happens. Next year, what happens the year afterward, I don't know if the bigger insult would be to have two percent. This year, two percent next year, two, because for me, that would really tick me off, because then I know that this is coming. Whereas if I know that this is, this is gonna exist right up front, and this is just me, I'm only speaking for me, I'm not speaking for anybody else, that. I know how to budget and I know how this is gonna affect me down the line, so I, I just. You know, it's just, it's a slippery slope, slippery slope.
Bill, can I ask you a question? Did you use the same assessment value of the homes as of today, or did you increase them every year?
No, I increased them every year. So I increased it basically four percent a year, just based on. Past couple of years of what it's been, that's what I was projecting out.
Okay.
And I, I did that also for the. Assessment of the whole town to, to generate that tax rate. And that's also how you calculate your debt ratio using that, so I also projected that out from now to twenty seven. I mean, it's, obviously that depends on how the real estate market is, but that's what it's been the past.
So, I, just a question to remind me, what is the debt ratio right now for us?
So if you go to that, that last page on that sheet I gave you. Currently, you're at two point five nine six percent at the end of last year. So if that, at the end of this year, Plan A is that two point two eight one or two point three oh eight? With the.
Then the goal is to get it down to one or fish.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's.
So I, I, I just wanna add just a different perspective, because I've, I've given this a lot of thought, I mean, I got this stuff, kind of thinking it over. So I know there's the mayor and you and Councilwoman Rosetti were gonna talk. I, I hear what everyone's saying about as far as, you know. The, the goal for, you know, reducing, paying off some debts, I totally get that. I understand the status of the bond rate, what, what we need that for, I understand as far as, you know. The, yes, we, we need the taxes, I, I, I just wanna throw out just a perspective, I mean, when we look at four percent. You know, Tony mentioned it, it's gonna hurt. And my only trepidation on this is that, you know, I'm looking at, you know, our. Our taxpayers got hit after pandemic, our apartment renters got hit pretty hard too, they got whacked. And there's a lot of those folks, so my source of trepidation is that, my source of concern is we're gonna whack these people, like, it's a lot of money and. We all pay taxes here too, and, you know, we can, we can plan as best you can, but. You know, it's not like it's, it's. It's not gonna take a chunk of money, that's the spot, and, and for, for a good cause, but I, I mean, my. Thinking is maybe this is another conversation between us, but. Is, like, is it four percent is a magic number here and then the other one is two? Or is there a mid-range that'll work that's not as harsh? Three percent? Or, I mean, I don't, I don't know how this, you're the guy, but. In my brain, I'm thinking, how can I plan this as a taxpayer? Can I kind of look down the line and say, all right, well, I know this year I'm gonna get an increase, next year is gonna be flat, next year is gonna be an increase, like. Is there a, like, is there sort of a up and down system, I don't know what you call it, I'm not a. I think it'd be better if you had a graph, because I think the point of it is, is that in openly that graph in terms of. This is what it looks like if we do four percent and this is what we look like doing two percent year over year, I think that's the other part of it. But I also think that, I also, and I'm just thinking because of layman's terms, when we, you know. Those tend to learn when they see, right, so, and, and so the other part of that is, is that. The slippery slope is two percent year over year, because you're still gonna get two percent year over year, so you're gonna go at seven percent versus four percent, that's what I thought I heard. At the end of five years, is that correct?
Well, if you go to this page, Bill, the third page in your, your handout. The third page in your handout, Councilman, if you look at that one, so the, if you go down to that, the, the dollar tax rate increase line under twenty twenty three. I'm sorry, the cost of the average household, so I'm in the four point three five percent, this year, the average house will go up three hundred thirty five dollars, for two percent, it's gonna go up. Seventy dollars less in year one, but then you go to year two, and that's when things really change, in year two. The average cost go, now is the assessed value going up by three percent, so it goes up one thirty two, but in two percent the following year, it goes up to two hundred dollars under Plan B. In twenty twenty five, it doesn't go up again, only assessed value, which is one thirty seven, but it goes up again, two hundred dollars. And that somebody is way more severe, twenty twenty six, it's one forty two versus two hundred dollars, twenty twenty seven. It's one forty eight versus one oh eight, but you can also see his tax rate has now dropped because that's when, that when the Union Hotel hits?
Half, yeah.
That's when the Union Hotel hits, so. So, but those. You know, there's a seventy dollar deep difference this year, but then it's like sixty to seventy, the opposite way every year. By doing the two percent and originally, Bill and I talked to get to this, to achieve the goal of putting aside money in the capital. The capital fund to be able to borrow money and to pay down the debt. And the notes, the bonds and the notes, he and I originally were talking about six, six and a half cents. And it's because our assessed value went up so high in this town that it was able to be reduced by four point three five percent, so he ran that number where I said. Get us just to this magic point and that was the number he came up with. Yeah, we didn't just, it wasn't like we picked up four cents, he was actually running it and originally it came out to over six percent. Six cents because of these, and then these assessed value kind of countered that, so.
So I have another question. Why aren't we taking the tax decrease in twenty twenty seven for the original poll?
What do you mean for, for Plan A?
No, the twenty. For the original poll, yeah, I guess, yeah, that's a lot of your own plan, in twenty twenty seven, you have a zero tax increase.
Right.
What did you plan, you have it going down the negative?
Because as I said, I didn't change anything in. I, I kept everything except for the, the debt payment, so in. In order for it to drop on Plan A, I would have to. I guess reduce the amount of debt we would pay off to get that tax rate to drop. You know, I mean, I didn't adjust anything else other than debt principal and note interest. In the Plan B. So because the, the. The. Interest, I guess, I don't have to look exactly what caused that to go down, but I guess the, the interest didn't go up as much as I, I had been paying off principal of. Of the debt.
I mean, because that's when the Union Hotel. Pilot is gonna hit, I mean, I would imagine we would take advantage of that on.
Well, that's what I was anticipating, that it's like half the year or something, you know, we're supposed to get six hundred thousand, I think I was anticipating three hundred thousand that year. Just based on, you know, when they get the COs or it could actually be sooner, it could be later, I don't really know, it's like. Start construction.
So the follow up on the Union Hotel Pilot. If we go with Plan B, how is that gonna affect? Any bonding we need to do? To finish. Roadwork and stuff like that, I mean, now, is that gonna affect? The pilot hitting in twenty twenty seven, if we can't get this bonding done?
For what, is there extra interest in, extra infrastructure improvements we need to do for? The cost prop?
Well, that's all, the, the, the water, the water service is all in bonded rate or encumbered, but, but the police building gives out a police.
That is not correct, so. And that would, that would be the, the issue, you wanna be able to get the police out of there and then to. Continue the project.
Right, which means that we're bumping twenty twenty seven maybe.
Could be.
Twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine?
I mean, there's no guarantee it's gonna be twenty twenty seven if we can't.
Bond for the rest of the work we need to get done.
I mean, by then, you. See, by then you'll have. Depending on what, what are the projects you plan on do, if you go to your budget sheet, that's. You'll have. Like six hundred fifty thousand in your capital improvement fund to be able to.
Where are you, Bill?
I'm on your, the budget sheets, page six, just the capital improvement fund. Knowing you, how much I'm putting in there, either Plan A, did not change that, so it's, you know, a hundred fifty five thousand this year, a hundred next year, a hundred fifty five, a hundred fifty. So you'll have that money which can be used for down payments on future. Uh, bond ordinances. Or if you're fully funded, if you wanted.
I have a couple of questions, and I know I'm gonna sound kind of silly, but can you, like, remind me how versus bonding? Like, as far as when can you bond, how, like, what percentage of? How does it work, like, just like a basic? Give me a big, like.
He wants to borrow a million dollars.
We're talking about for, for this budget, we're anticipating having the bond, we wanna hire a better bond rating.
Oh, oh, you wanted to, how we actually do a bond?
Just a basic.
How you do a bond, you have a rating agency come. They do an evaluation of our financials. Of our readable base, of the outlook of the borough in general, which is actually, I think, very good. They look at our surplus number, they look at our debt ratio capital, they look at how fast we pay off debt. And they sit with the CFO and they do a big interview and then they give a rating, did I miss any stuff?
No, and they look at, you know, if we have a forecast of. Our budget for the future to see. our budget for the future to see and.
They want to know if there is a, if we have a debt cap, a a debt management plan, which we will have, and calling one up for your consideration to approve debt management plan, um and uh they want to know if there's a projection which Bill's done now out for forty years on capital. At my request, crazy, um. And uh and then they come, they rate us. So it's all those factors.
Yes, and once you get the rating, then you have the, the bond sale and that's your interest rates.
Right.
Based on.
They put together, they, once they have the rating, then they put together the form of documents, which Bill looks at, approves, you go through it with the financials column, it goes through the whole thing about what this is, it's been a sponsor, blah, blah, blah. So what they look like, this is how they are, and that goes out to all the houses that, you know, to look at them and then, um and then they literally open it up online. It's like the crazy, you can watch, watch it. It's crazy. It takes minutes and it's over.
I could get you a copy of our last uh offer and statement.
All right, um, just some divergent thing. So I've heard a few times, and we talked about this last time, the Union Hotel Pilot, you know, when that comes in, when that money comes in. Is there a way to kind of like, so we look at this, the taxes, and I'm, I'm still caught on four percent. What if we said, why don't we shift that later? When at the same time we're anticipating pilot money, we know it's a short thing. Why not? Is that an equation that's something that that's done? Is that something? Is that?
You can do that, just, but that though is the, the point that we're gonna have to borrow the money. You know, and for instance, the, the fire truck, we haven't borrowed that money yet because we haven't bought it, but we're gonna have to borrow it probably at the end of this year because we're not to pay for it next year. So it's just a matter of if you want to try to pave this thing off without borrowing it, or you borrow it, you pay the extra in interest.
Okay.
But yeah, you can.
But if we also wait for the Union Hotel money, we also can't do.
Do any other projects.
For four years, we're not gonna be able to do anything.
At the end of the day, if we, now, I just want to make sure right here. If you don't do the four percent, then we can't do any projects. Basically, that's what I think I hear.
Well, you're limited on what you can do.
And what, when you say limited, what is, how limited is?
Well, right now, our um right now, we only have ninety three thousand in the capital improvement fund. So that's under two million dollars that you have available.
Did you say ninety three thousand?
Ninety three thousand.
Nothing.
So you, you know, to do two million, you need a hundred thousand dollars as a down payment. So you can't even do two million dollars. The um right now, the maximum you can go is three and a half percent of your assessed, average three years assessed value. So that would be about sixteen million dollars that you could, and we're at eleven, we're at twelve million. So you have four million that you, is out there. If you wanted to, you could technically go up to the max, which I wouldn't recommend, but. So there is the, the ability to do that, but you don't have the money in capital improvement funds to even go near that amount.
And what you drain that, then you're starting all over because then you have nothing. Is that correct?
So ninety three thousand, you mean?
If you, if you use, yeah.
If we use up the, all the money in our capital improvement fund, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to bond if there's a emergency or anything. And you don't want to be at the max with your uh total debt because then you'd have to go to the state to get approvals to exceed, you know, the.
I think you have to do a referendum thing, I'm sorry, to exceed.
To exceed.
You, yeah, and then they come in, they want.
They got in trouble, a couple of towns got themselves in trouble with that.
Yeah.
And then the state comes in and.
I mean, they don't, I mean, I've gone back to two thousand and twelve and I looked at capital fund and every single year from two thousand and twelve, which is when the fire department came here and said, we're gonna need a truck in ten years. Um the governing body was putting aside anywhere from a minimum of fifty thousand up to two hundred thousand a year. And the last three years, the governing body only put in ten thousand a year, but taking money out of those savings. So four years ago, there was six hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund. We're down to ninety three thousand. So money's been coming out of savings. Nothing's been going back in. You know, plus the borrowing on top of it. So four years ago, there was a little under six million dollars um owed in this town, and now it's just a little under twelve million. So this is like, you know, you take your house, you put on a new roof, buy new carpeting, you buy new windows, and you're pulling all the money out of savings, and you're putting everything else on credit cards, and you're not getting a second job. And since government, government has very little ability to raise money through fees, fines, tickets from the police, whatever it is, the bulk of our revenue, that job is, is taxes. So, you know, and you know, and 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 I'm gonna add, not only only putting in ten thousand a year, which is nothing, and taking money out of the capital fund, but also raising taxes at the same time, seven, seven cents over four years. Right? So now we're proposing putting a maximum amount in, fixing the structural deficit that we have once, and not having another tax increase possibly for a decade. So. I mean, if we had like uh the world's greatest, I mean, the greatest ratable, I, I don't know what that would look like. Uh Trader Joe's wanting to come in with, with another Costco right here in Wilmington. We couldn't do it for him. We couldn't do it for him. You know, thirty years, Main Street, Main Street and the circle to Williams Street, thirty years, according to N D L, it has been kicked down the road because nobody's been willing to spend the money or have the money to do it. It's a three million dollar plus project, and it is our gateway entranceway into Wilmington. And it's gonna be another twenty years, like, because we can't get this under, if we don't get this under control. So it's, it's really easy to say no to a tax increase like last year. It is really hard to to do what needs to be done to fix a structural deficit like this, where you guys are spending more money than you're taking. Wiz, you want to say anything? Hi, Wiz.
Hi. My thanks.
You can come in. You don't have to be shy. Susan, Susan what?
Susan has her hand up.
Susan, just take yourself off the you.
Hi there, sorry, um, not sure if this question was asked while I was indisposed, but um the, can, Bill, can you explain um how, we know that there's another pilot with the Captiva project eventually, but how that's not reflected, obviously, in this budget that we, you know, I've had a, I only saw this morning, but that's not anybody's fault. Um, what?
Susan, there is no pilot with Captiva. They've never negotiated a pilot.
Okay, so that, that's still pending. So obviously, that's not included in this budget.
It's, they haven't even applied for permits with the D P.
Okay, I'm talking, Captiva, that is.
Captiva, that is.
Okay, thank you. And then.
R D A, but they do not have a pilot in place.
Okay, and um all right, so I guess my question is, well, we, we obviously can't get that pilot in place before we have to make that decision on this budget. Um but we definitely should encourage that to move forward because obviously that affects the budget long term. Um my next question is, Bill, the, the um the uh um the, the project that's up on the hill, the, the Big Well Project, um when, what a percentage of debt is that overall? And I apologize if it's somewhere in all of the paperwork that I got this morning, but.
So the, the utilities actually are not included in the, that debt because they're self liquidating, meaning they fund themselves. Um but I could, uh, there, I think that project was three million dollars.
Right, yeah, it was pretty, I mean, so it was, I guess, what is the, so I, I can't, um I'm not gonna be able to figure out in my head what the percentage of that debt is um overall. When did we start? Like, when, what is the timeline on that particular project? Is there a, is there a timeline that we have to pay that particular part off? And was that more significant than some of the other debts recently, in recent years?
That was a USDA loan that we just closed on in January for forty years. So we're gonna be paying that for the next forty years.
Okay, so up to that point, up to this point, we haven't had to start paying for that one.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Um that's all my questions. Like I said, I'm gonna check in with Bill later this week when it's a little easier for me to communicate. So I do apologize, but um like I said, we just um with some last minute changes to our flight, so.
And and Susan.
I, I'm doing my best to be here.
Oh, thank you. And and just, just to keep things in perspective with Captiva, because they are building in a theme of a plane, their permits alone for the D P took two years.
I understand. I, yeah, I understand that it takes, takes a while. I just wanted to make sure that we uh kept in mind that that was coming down the pipe, but I know that that can't be reflected in this. So I just was wondering if there was any type of um way we could at least figure that out for the future, but we can't, we can't have that discussion right now. It's, it's not appropriate.
And just one thing, uh because she brought it up, just so you know, that twelve million dollars of debt, as I said, that's just the borough's debt. Utilities, water and sewer, another eighteen million on top of that. So that, that's a big number.
Um Marcia, I guess, can I ask a couple more questions? Because I'm thinking of stuff as I, as I go along here. And again, I apologize if you guys already, if I'm duplicative. Oh, well, then I can just, I can just ask Bill this week. That's fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Susan, sorry, um.
It's no big deal, no big deal.
Um, any other questions for Bill? Um, Bill's gonna have to circle back with everybody and decide where we're going with this because by law, I'll be introduced um at our first meeting in April, and um I don't know where it is right now. If there's four to three, three, five to one, I have no idea. Um maybe I should just poll everybody. Kim, are you inclined to support a, the for, the Plan A? Yes. Uh, Leek, are you inclined to support? Council President, are you inclined to support?
Not for myself, sorry.
Um, Mr. Parker, are you inclined to support?
I am.
Ms. Rosetti, are you inclined to support?
I'm still mulling it over to be very honest with you.
And um do you need another conversation? If you need another conversation with Mr. Hands, please talk with him.
I will, I will. I think I just need to, you know, uh sleep on it because, you know, we just talked, what, yesterday? So um, yeah. I I will reach out to Bill though if I have more questions.
And single, I know you're gonna reach out to Mr. Hands as well. And again, if uh it's three degree, mayors don't break ties on budgets, so you're all gonna have to come up with something because I've been doing this my best shot, twenty seven years in budgeting, including writing the state's operating budget. I can't do any better. So um, all right, we are gonna go in thirty seconds into regular meeting. Oh, I have to have a public portion of this, right?
I'm gonna close out.
Well, I gotta have, we didn't do the public comment session. I gotta have public comments. Does anybody have, this is on the budget work session. Anybody has any public comments? Just need to get a municipality, your name, otherwise we're gonna do two public comments in the regular meeting. Nobody on line, right? And there's nobody up, no, I see no hands up. Okay, great, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Charlie will.
Hold on a second.
All right, all right, um, okay, on my agenda.
Well, it's me, and I've got to the end, I don't have a next stop.